And good evening, everyone. This is the school district of the city of Dearborn regular meeting for Monday, May 12th, 2025. I call this meeting to order at 7:40. I do truly apologize for starting late. We did have another business to take care of at the other institution that we do serve at Henry Ford College. And I'm happy to report that we did make a decision of an interim president to appoint Dr. Gonko as the interim president for Henry Ford College. So we appreciate everybody who came to the meeting today and we appreciate your patience. May I have a roll call, please?
Yeah, and we were late and I'd just like to say for the record, it was Pat's fault. All right. Trustee Al Jami.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Treasurer D'Ambrogio.
Here.
Trustee Pelichkov.
Here.
Vice President Watts. Secretary Zaher here. President Mosib.
Here, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. And today, we are blessed to have the presence of the Dearborn Girl Scouts Troop 77989 to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Make yourselves known.
As they come up here, I just have to mention, we had some time to fill when you guys were heading over. So they were over here in your seats, were kind of running a meeting.
They sat in our seats?
They did.
Okay, we'll have a talk with them.
Troop 77989, I know that number.
Good evening, President Mosib and Dr. Malick and trustees. So we do have Girl Scouts Troop 78778989, 77989. So we're going to lead you on the pledge. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good job.
I can have all of you come over here, watch your step.
Excited group.
Yep, so I'll have Yara Abduni. Yara?
The girls have something for you, too.
Oh, thank you very much.
I am so glad.
Nadia Deep.
Oh, my goodness. I'm so guilty.
It's Nadia Deep.
You win.
Oh, thank you.
You win.
He didn't get one yet. He needs one.
Nadia Deep.
Thank you very much. Thank you, girls.
I'll let him come up here so he takes his shirt off.
Come on up, girl.
I've got, thank you.
I got one, I got one. Thank you, I got one. Thank you, I do got one.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be doing some trading behind the scenes here. I know. I like those.
If you like what you've got.
Let's get the certificates. So Nadia Deep, where's Nadia? Okay. Nasreen Faraj? Nasreen?
Right here.
Nasreen. Okay, An Naveen? Here. Mariam Subh?
Me.
All right. Sabaah Subh?
Oh, you're up.
Perfect. Zainab Subh?
Yes, it is.
Sana Qazwi?
That's me.
Yasana?
Sarah Kanaz.
Kanaz, okay, thank you. And Sarah Kanaz. There we go. All right. You should all have your certificates. Perfect. Let's take a picture.
Based that way and hold the certificates in front of you. Come on.
Thank you.
I did, I did.
You're on TV. There's at least 10 people watching.
Next item, please.
Next item is the Superintendent's Update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with our traditional retirements that are on the agenda. Both thank them for their years of service and congratulate them on their retirement. Last month, we had a large list because of the deadline for the incentive, but this time, we don't have as many. But again, congratulations to all. Kamel Elaloom, over 18 years. Alyssa Coleman, 26 years. Lisa DiMarco, 25 years. Catherine Keebler, 25 years. Ashar Maktari is an update of 31 years of service. And Jacqueline Stazell is over 32 years of service. Congratulations and thank you for all of your service. I'll just keep going down the list. I know we have a lot of teachers in the crowd. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. We truly appreciate the hard work and dedication of our teachers. I think one of the events that kicks off a lot of positive is not only the Student Choice Awards that was a few months, a few weeks back, but last week, we had our student superintendent honors night. And we have students that came up and honored a staff member that made a difference in their lives. And you could tell it was really about the relationship. And so appreciate the great work the teachers do. It was great. I think we had four kindergarten teachers that came up, which is fantastic. So I always have kind of a special place for those elementary teachers when the students remember. But we thank the teachers at all level, elementary, high school, middle school, and all the members for the great work they do each and every day. I also want to do a shout out for Mental Health Awareness Month. We take it very serious in the district with social workers. I think one of the highest number on average per student. Mike Casale is nodding because we've added over the last several years. We also have support programs like Care Solus for our students and teachers if needed. But we also have our U Alliance that we provide for staff if mental health support is necessary. Last Monday, we had an excellent meeting about the potential bond, potential bond that we're working towards with our infrastructure. We had Quinn Evans who presented. It was a very, very good meeting. I think we got a lot accomplished. We still got a lot of work to do. But if you'd like to watch that, it is on the YouTube. You can go. It was last Monday and it was very, very good meeting. We all know that we need to do some infrastructure upgrades and it's just a matter of getting that plan together. And I think Quinn Evans has a lot of good data. Just for the board, they're probably going to be reaching out, president, for either individual or small meetings before the next board meeting. They felt like they needed to get some information in your hands, especially because we didn't have some of the committee meetings today. I want to mention, too, my role. I'm rotating off the MAS A Superintendent Board next month. I spent six years and I think it served us well also in Dearborn. It's given me direct line to lobbyists, connections to legislatures, and to advocate for Dearborn students. I'm now on the AASA, the National Superintendent Midwest Regional Board. And another positive is they pay for all the expenses. But it gets us in the know, it gives us influence, and a lot of stuff going on at the federal level that's very important. So it gets me right in direct ability to advocate for students, to build relationships with legislators, superintendents across the state. And it was a privilege and honor for me to serve two, last year, as the president of the Michigan Superintendent Association. So just wanted to say, I think it pays some dividends for our district. And I know, President, you have mentioned that to me as well. So thank you for the board support and the community. And again, we're advocating for students in those roles. One thing most recently that I was able to use lobbyists is our English Language Learner Committee that I formed a year and a half ago, Mr. Salee and Ms. Roselle Bailey, but it's superintendents across the state, the Michigan Association of Bilingual Education. And we formed a group to advocate for English language learners. We were pleased to see an increase in the budget at the state level from the Senate. So we're hoping we're going to get more funding that way. So it's a positive. And it's sharing in best practice. On the federal level, the news is a little different. A week, so to date, we have been cut $5.8 million from the federal government by the Trump-Musk federal cuts. They announced a week and a little bit over a week ago on Friday, that Title II, III, and IV were eliminated, I believe Title VI as well. And I'll mention what they're, what they are. There will be a transition period, so we don't know exactly when that implementation will happen. But we also had the HRA Health Resources Advocate eliminated about two months ago and it was retroactive. That's about $1.4 million between the two years. Title II is staff development for teachers and others. Title III, I just said we got an increase potentially at the state, but a decrease now of English language learner funding at the federal level. And then Title IV is for multiple types of programs. You know, it could be for technology, it's for the arts, social, emotional learning, tech, health, and services for students. So that Title IV funding was also eliminated. So far, Title I and IDEA, which is the special ed, have not been reduced. We're monitoring that very closely. And I know there's a resolution today about fully funding IDEA. So to show that, right now, special ed funding is not fully funded by the federal government, even though it's a federal mandate. So we still don't get full funding, but we're, you know, we want to maintain and not have any reductions at least to that. Because if there were reductions, we'd have to pick it up with the general fund and therefore it would impact all students.
Can you just let everybody know how much, if we lost those two title?
Sure.
Programs would be in total?
So the ones that I just mentioned, I had the $5.8 million. The Title I is $15 million and the IDEA special ed is $5 million approximately. So that would be another $20 million.
Correct. So we're talking, closing in on almost $30 million at the end of the day with?
A lot of this will most likely in talking?
Not that it's happening.
Sure. Thank you for mentioning that, Trustee Pelichkov. We believe that a lot of this will end up in the courts, in a fight with Congress at the federal level. You know, and there was an injunction put in about districts having to certify about eliminations of DEI programs. And so we have attorneys involved with that, not just our attorneys, but on the state and national level, which is again why it's advantageous for me to be in these associations, directly involved advocating for our students. In fact, I'll be in Washington this summer with the AASA group. But I also have to mention, so we now go into the state budget. So the state budget is our bigger portion of our budget. And I want to say this, I'm not doing it to scare anything, anybody. We have, the reality is that we deal with it and we will. We'll move forward and we'll maintain, we'll protect our students. But these are the realities we're facing. And the state budget, we probably will not get, Tom's talking about it tonight, but we do not anticipate getting it resolved at the state level until September. It's going to be one of those years where we have to estimate, the board has to approve it in June by law. We have to approve our budget by June 30th. And then we may not know exactly what hap, what is going to happen. Senator Camilleri and then the support of Santana and other senators, it's more favorable to public education from the budget coming out, from what I saw and I was in a meeting with him and other superintendents. The budget coming out of the House is not. They want to eliminate all categoricals. I don't necessarily think it'll end up there, but just for an example, we have many what we call categorical state grants. Our at-risk categorical grant is approximately $24 million. So just to give you an idea of what, now I don't anticipate that getting eliminated, but I anticipate in the negotiations, we may or may not get the kind of budgets we've had the last two years at state level. So those are other things that we just have to, you know, deal with. I mean, another thing, too, that the state has to deal with is if more federal cuts come, then they may have to find other funding to fill the gap. For example, there's talk of Head Start, which is about $480 million. And then the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, which is about $900 million in federal dollars. So if those were to go or not come to the state, the state would have to make up those somehow. So eventually, the pool would be less for everyone. So this is the reality of what we're facing with a lot of these Trump-Musk budget cuts. And again, it's not being political, it's just being factual. This is what's happening right now. So, so I don't know. I'll move on to the next thing. I have positive things now. Graduation ceremonies are going. We start at the Henry Ford Early College. I know the college had theirs last weekend, I believe.
Last Saturday.
Sounds like it all went well with our trustees and our students that do great over there at the college. And so ours is starting up next Saturday. And then we have some going into the year and will be, we will not have another meeting before the, before all the ceremonies. So congratulations to all our graduates. We graduate about 1,500 a year. So it's great work that the team does and teachers and all staff to support our students. I have another positive mention here. The Mackinac Center for Public Policy, which is an independent, nonprofit partisan research educational institute, and I'm just going to read the highlight. Dearborn School's top new contacts and performance report card, they were, we were at the top in the headlines. And so congratulations, again, we are always looking to improve, but Dearborn was the headline of that article. So great job to staff and students as we continue to look forward and always want to improve. The last thing I have is, and the board has that in their briefs and it's been also, we also put out a publication through David's Communications on that. You could see that. The last two things I have are, first of all, Ms. Courtney Pletzky received her HR certification from MSBO. Congratulations to her. And then, you know, we're sad to see him go, but we have Mr. Adam Martin, who's the next superintendent of Waterford Public Schools. Congratulations, Adam. Thank you for your hard work. I still remember that interview, maybe it was it nine, 10 years ago over at Dearborn High, when you started over there and you've done great work and we appreciate all that you've done for students and thank you and good luck moving forward. And I know we'll be talking a lot as superintendent colleagues, so. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the superintendent? Trustee Barry.
Dr. Malick, and when we ask for information, we're not asking employees, we're kind of asking you.
Sure.
So I did ask for something last month, I still don't have it. So from now on, I would like for you to follow up.
Okay.
If there's a reason why information is delayed.
What is it that you?
I asked for, I thought it was simple, but I wanted to see a graph. We already saw a graph of the DFT.
Yeah.
Salaries. I want to see a graph of the non-instructional, DFT, and exempt employees. I did talk to Mr. Wall, I believe sometime last week, but this is information that I personally want and is going to need with some of the decisions moving forward. The other thing, I emailed you and copied the President Mosib regarding some information, looking at some evaluations, and thank you for getting the legal, legal opinion on that.
Sure.
I am not, I am not expecting a vote on this today.
Okay.
We, our colleagues and I have been very, very busy the last couple of weeks.
Sure.
We didn't, I didn't get a chance to, I don't know, to discuss this with them.
Yeah.
But I do want to share this list with you. And I did update it from the one I sent you.
Okay.
So then probably put this on the agenda at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, no problem.
If you want to pass this down, please. And the last thing I'm going to ask for is, the last time we did this, we asked for to be able to look at an employee's file. And we did get it approved. I want to add another one more person.
Okay.
If possible. And then I'll, I'll talk to my colleagues.
Sure.
Why not? This is for you, too. Thank you. That's all I have, President Mosib.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is recognition and acknowledgement.
My name is Vivun Wuzniewski and I'm a senior at Etzel Ford.
And good evening. My name is Zin Salam and I'm also a senior at Etzel Ford High School. Commendations to student winners in the PTA Art Reflections Contest. The students will be recognized during an event on May 16 at Woodworth Middle School. Congratulations to first place winner, Nada Mahdi, in fourth grade at Howard. Second place winner, Reema Jries, in seventh grade at Woodworth. And third place winner, Karia Ali, in eighth grade at Woodworth. Honorable mentions were given to Lamia Al Shehri, fourth grade at Oakman Elementary, Calvin Cruz, 10th grade at Etzel Ford High School. Luana Gazal, 7th grade at Woodworth Middle School. Salina Sage, 7th grade at Woodworth Middle School. Huda Al Mansouk, 4th grade at Oakman Elementary. Ayla Hamoud, 3rd grade at Duval Elementary. Gamilah Al Sabahi, 7th grade at Salina Intermediate. And Layali Ali, 7th grade at Woodworth.
For the high school, commendations to Dearborn High students involved in the video program. Students won Best of Show this year at the Michigan Student Film Festival for their public service of announcement, Speak Up, Stay Together, Stay Safe. The National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences awarded the students four regional student production awards. The schools, third year in a row winning Best Sound. These movies will continue on to the national competition. The winning projects include Best of Show winner, Speak Up, Stay Together, Stay Safe, Amina Tumi, producer, Jesse Good, editor, Diara Fuller, camera, Maria Foley, talent, Evelyn Travers, producer. Best Fiction, long form winner, Death in the Family, Jacob Head, executive producer, Noah Ammasurker, producer. Best Music Video winner, Feeling Good, Jesse Good, producer, Evelyn Travers, talent, Maria Foley, talent, Colton Abbott, talent, and Amina Tumi, talent. Best winner, Best Editor winner, WDHS Festival Trailer, Mohammed Al Makli, editor. Best Audio/Sound winner, The Silent Assassin, Colton Abbott, sound, Fidel Al Jaber, sound. Guests can see all submitted videos during the WDHS Film Festival on May 16th and 17th. Commendations to the students involved with the Pioneer Press. The students submitted 20, or 36 entries and took home 27 individual awards from the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association Annual Spring Awards. The awards include two first place, two third place, and 23 honorable mentions. First place winners were Mohammed Al Ali for First Page News Magazine and Ash Watson for an opinion article. Third place winners include Ash Watson and Hussein Hamoud for editorial opinion and Wilson and Yang for advertising layout. Commendations to senior Jenna Dakala from Dearborn High and Rafi Kaldeary from Henry Ford Early College for presenting the district on the State Superintendent Advisory Committee. Both students recent, recently received a special Michigan Department of Education Court in appreciation of their service. Commendation to Fortson High School teacher, Maryam Abadi, who recently completed her PhD in STEM Educational Studies at Wayne State University. Commendation to Fortson Auto Shop teacher, Tariq Al Gabri. He completed his ASE slash NATF accreditation during his first year of teaching, is listed as a reviewer for the fifth edition of the Modern Automotive Technology Textbook and was nominated as Automotive Teacher of the Year. He also oversaw a record number of Fortson students who took and passed ASE Student Certification this year. Commendations to Sarah Brookheisen, Etzel Ford Band Orchestra and Piano Teacher, and Jeffrey Kelm, Etzel Ford Music Teacher, for their efforts to bring several different learning experiences to Etzel students who are involved in both vocal and instrumental music. The visits included guest lectures, specialized clinics, and professional woodwind quintet to discuss the experience of being a professional musician. Commendations to Etzel Ford for hosting the annual evening of jazz, featuring jazz bands from Lowry Middle School, Bryant Middle School, STEM Middle School, Dearborn High School, and Etzel Ford High School. This is a collaborative event by Sarah Brookheisen, Nicole Hartrick, Brian McCloskey, Marwin Neshf, and Matthew Ketchwin. Commendations to Etzel Ford students involved in innovative vehicle technology design competition at Kettering University. The team took second place in overall performance for their vehicle, which was designed and built by students. Senior Jeremy Paddock served as the team chief. The team is led by auto and welding teacher, Marissa Reno.
Commendations to Lowry Middle School students who performed the National Arab Orchestra on April 26th and to their music teacher, Marwan Neshf. The concert was held at Ford Community and Performing Arts Center. Commendations to various student groups helping raise money for Smith Middle School, student battling cancer. The National Honor Society at Etzel Ford and Dearborn High each raised $150 for the student. The O.W. Smith National Junior Honor Society, in the collaboration with Dearborn Education Foundations' crowdfunding support, raised $7,500 for the student's family. Commendations to elementary instructional coaches, Nicole Bush and Angela Zaghar and early childhood specialist Sarah Burkholder, for their outstanding dedication and leadership in development of the 25-26 reading assessment resources and professional development. This work was done in partnership with the group and included administrators, curriculum leaders, and assessment department. Their collaborative efforts have ensured a smooth and well-supported rollout for the upcoming school, yet empowering educators with tools needed to strengthen literacy instruction and student achievement across the district.
Thank you so much. Before you leave, any questions for the students? I know you mentioned your names in the beginning, I couldn't get them. So if you state your names again, and since you're seniors, where are you planning to go for, after high school?
My name is Zin Salam and I am a senior at Etzel Ford High School. And I plan on attending Wayne State for cybersecurity.
Amazing.
My name is Vivun Wuzniewski. I plan on attending Michigan State for Political Science and a double major in economics.
Best wishes. All right. All right, thank you so much.
Good job.
Dr. Malick, you mentioned something, probably you missed something in your update.
Yeah, just had to mention that the board calendar for next year, the draft is there for the board. It would go to the board, in the board briefs, and then it will go to the board next month for potential approval. And Trustee Barry, I just spoke to Mr. Wall. We'll get you that report ASAP. He had some clarifying questions, which is why he contacted you, but he'll discuss it and we'll get it to you as soon as possible.
Sure, thank you. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I didn't want to like put that out there, but there was one report where it just took forever and talking about like over a year. I know when I first returned to the board, I was told by colleagues that from now on, when you ask for information, you have to get at least three approval, like four, like a quorum. And that didn't make any sense. We need information. Then there was another colleague that came on board later on. He was asking a lot of, you know, a lot of requests for information and we know how that worked out for that trustee. So this is a board that's hungry for data, hungry for information, so let's just get on track, that's all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Wall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Teacher of the Year.
Right? Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Ms. Harris. So just a couple of quick follow-ups. I just wanted to, while we were giving commendations, wanted to take this opportunity to once again, give commendations to all of those who took part in Superintendent's Honors Night. But at the event, I failed to acknowledge my staff who puts on that event. And so I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Jacob Farah, Eric Chig Fry, Titus Young in Graphics, Joanna Machinsky, and of course, the person who really does everything for Superintendent's Honors Night is Ms. Katie Hetrick. So I want to give her a big commendations for all her efforts in organizing 180 students and 120 teachers and getting them all there, getting them on stage, organizing them. So without her efforts, that event would not go as smoothly as it does. So commendations to all of them. Thank you for giving me that moment. Also following up, then anyone who wants to view the Dearborn High videos, they're having a film festival at Dearborn High this Friday and Saturday, the May 16th and 17th. Great opportunity. We were going to show a couple of clips here, but given the full agenda for tonight, we opted not to show those, those video clips here. But I encourage everyone to go and support the Dearborn High Video Department. They do a great job over there. Thank you for allowing me that little sidetrack there. So every year, the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce sponsors the Teacher of the Year awards. This is a great partnership between our business community and the Dearborn Public Schools. We're very proud in that we are able to work with them in organizing this event to honor our teachers. And it really is an event that honors the teachers from the student perspective. All of the nominations that we received, close to 2,000 this year, were from students. And they acknowledge the great work that their teachers are doing. And we appreciate both the students for their efforts and the teachers for taking part in that event. We have our winners. This was your cue to come up. This was your cue, yeah. So we have, three, four. We have four of our five winners who are here this evening. I am going to let each of them introduce themselves and tell you what school that they are from.
My name is Noor Awudib and I teach Arabic at Dearborn High School.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Gada Makhlid and I teach at Lowry Middle School, sixth grade math.
Congrats.
Hello, my name is Deanne Jones and I teach fifth grade at Long Elementary.
Congrats, ladies.
Hi, Kathy Loris, GSRP teacher at Snow Elementary.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
They said we had an opportunity to have a little spiel if I could. So when I was, when asked if I would be interested in sharing my thoughts on this award, I was excited to have this opportunity to share my gratitude, but terrified to speak in front of adults. To be nominated for Teacher of the Year is truly an honor and then to win is amazing. First and foremost, thank you. Thank you to my student Rosa, who took the time to nominate me. And knowing that my work has resonated with her enough to put my name forward means the world to me. It's a powerful reminder of why teachers are in this profession in the first place to make a positive impact on the lives of our students. And of course, a huge thank you to Alberta Murhead, along with the Education Committee and the Board for establishing this Teacher of the Year Award and all of the sponsors. Your dedication to recognizing and celebrating educators is so important and appreciated. And this acknowledgement provides such a wonderful boost and encouragement. And this award isn't just about me, it reflects the amazing students who fill my classroom with curiosity and energy, the support of colleagues who share their wisdom and laughter, and the families who entrust us with their precious children. It's a testament to the collaborative spirit that makes Dearborn Public Schools and Long Elementary so special. I have been fortunate in the last 28 years, working under four wonderful principals, George Monroe, Veronica Jacobus, Shannon Peterson, and now Yvonne Lewis. They have helped shape me into the teacher I am today and I'm so appreciative to the many dedicated and talented educators and I feel humbled that I was considered among them. It's a moment to pause, reflect on my journey, and appreciate the incredible privilege of being a teacher. Thank you again from the bottom of my heart.
So, good evening, Dr. Maliko, members of the board. I'm grateful to be afforded the opportunity tonight to speak as I was truly in a state of shock and awe and had no words that evening I was chosen as Dearborn Public Schools Teacher of the Year for the pre-K to 2nd grade category. Most of you here tonight have heard me speak here before and know it's truly a rare moment for me to be rendered speechless. So I hope you're ready for my words this evening, because here they are. I've been blessed to have been nominated for this prestigious award and recognition for each and every one of my 11 years here teaching in Dearborn. I'm beyond thankful to have won this year and since then have had many other people ask me what it is I did to have won. This led me to spend quite a bit of time reflecting on what it is I do, both in and outside of my classroom on a daily basis. The more that I think about it, the answer became more and more clear and it's really quite simple. And being intention, it's being intentional about practicing diversity, equity, and inclusion in my classroom. As all of you here know, Dearborn is an extraordinarily diverse city. In fact, of the 195 recognized countries throughout the world, I've had the privilege of working with children and families in my classroom from 13 different countries already. These families have represented the countries of Lebanon, Yemen, Iraq, Mexico, Morocco, Jordan, Egypt, Saudi Arabia, Palestine, Libya, Syria, Pakistan, and of course, the United States. I make it a priority daily in my classroom to practice equality. In fact, I'm knowing, I'm known for saying quite often that fair is not always equal. I've had families in my classroom who have come from war-torn countries, coming here with nothing and seeking refuge from what most of us here could not even begin to imagine as being considered as a normal day-to-day life. I've had children in my classroom who come from homes with one parent and also children who come from homes with no parents, children who are being raised by trusted adults such as grandparents and aunts and uncles, and people who love them unconditionally that are doing everything in their power to give these children what they need. I strive to meet each child and each family exactly where they're at, at that exact moment, as no two families are the same. They are each unique and need different things. This is equality, ensuring everyone has not the same things, but what they need in order to be successful. Speaking of needing different things in order to succeed, this year alone in my class of students, 25% of them have individualized education plans, one of which also has their own one-on-one parapro. I've had children in my class with a wide range of what some people refer to as disabilities, but to me, these are labels that make these children unique and allow them to shine. I've had children with visual impairments, speech and language delays, early childhood developmental delays, students who are completely deaf as well as hearing impaired, students with ADHD, yes, at the young age of four, and of course, autism spectrum disorder. It was in fact a parent of a child with ASD who sent in my winning nomination this year. The letter this parent sent in spoke of their child having limited speech, said that I made the transition to school smooth and reassuring. They noted the work I did to create a specific schedule for the child and the help I gave them with potty training. And lastly, they highlighted the special attention I gave them and their child to ensure that their child received the necessary services they needed in order to be successful in a general education classroom setting. At the end of the day, this is what true inclusivity looks like. So as I go on, continuing to do what I do daily, when people ask me how you get to win Teacher of the Year, when there are over 2,000 nominations for over 400 amazing teachers in the district, my answer will continue to be to keep being intentional about practicing diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
As I said before, my name is very weird, Noof Abu-Di. And I was given the honor of being this year's High School Alberta Murhead Teacher of the Year. I would like to express my gratitude to everyone who has supported me as a teacher across these wonderful days, 26 years. Thank you to my school administrators, all of you, my students, especially my student who nominated me and wrote a poem about me, Zinedine Baisi, the board members, and so many more, whose hard work and dedication brought me to this moment. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think they pretty much summarized everything nicely. So mine is very simple. Good evening. Again, I just want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank you so much for the incredible honor. I'm truly, I'm deeply humbled and grateful for this reward. It's a real privilege to be recognized alongside so many outstanding teachers and individuals who work in this, in this district. I also would like to thank my students for taking the time to write and nominate me, Hiva, Harry, and Ahmed. They, they did a really nice job, obviously, which means they truly understand why I challenged them on a daily basis. Once again, thank you for the incredible honor and award, I really, really appreciate it, but I think they did a phenomenal job summarizing how everybody feels. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to also mention that Mr. Andrew Wertz was the winner from the Adult Education category. When the Chamber of Commerce first started the Teacher of the Year Award, there were just three winners, elementary, middle, and high school. And over the years, they've adapted and changed because they saw the different needs. That's why they've broken up elementary into two groups and they've added the Adult Education Group. So I really appreciate the Chamber, Ms. Kelly Vandembosh, who is the current Executive Director of the Chamber for all of their work and their efforts, this LaFontaine Automotive Group, who is the sponsor for that, for this award ceremony as well. We want to thank them. Again, it's a great partnership between our business community and the Dearborn Public Schools. We want to keep that going. And I think when you hear these teachers and these educators speak, you understand why they were selected. So thank you all very much. If you guys would like, we could get a quick picture with the board.
Congratulations.
Next item is employee recognition.
Good evening. This is our last one for the school year. I'd like to ask Lena Hamud to join me. She's the only one that's able to attend today. So I will start with Lena. Lena is a Satellite Food Service Manager at Cotter. She's been employed by Dearborn Schools for over five years, but I have to say that Lena has been part of Dearborn Schools for much longer than five years. She was one of the parents that I worked closely with during my time at Woodworth and she gave us so much as a parent as well. She's nominated for her positive attitude and caring for staff members and students. Lena, you want to say a few words?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lena Hamud. First of all, thank you for all of you for taking your time to be here. I just want to say thank you to all of you for your alt work, for all the work that you do to make Dearborn Public School a safe and well place for our future generation of our kids. And thank you, we will keep them well-educated and well-fed together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elizabeth Morrison is a teacher at Duval Elementary School.
She's got 24 years with Dearborn Schools and she's nominated, was nominated for being a great mentor and teacher, going above and beyond for all of her learners and even supporting them before and after school. So great big thank you to Elizabeth Morrison. Also, for the Administrator of the Month, it is Reema Yunis, the principal at Lowry K8. Reema has been employed with Dearborn Schools for 26 years. She's nominated for her remarkable leadership and dedication. She fosters a positive, respectful, and supportive environment and has such a positive impact on the Lowry School community. Thank you, Reema, and we are honored to have Elizabeth, Lena, and Reema as part of the Dearborn team. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is acknowledgment of donations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Maliko, Ms. Harris. I'd like to recommend the following donations right here that were offered to the district. The first one is a donation of $586 that was offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation for the Animal Farm Creative Summit project. Also, a donation of $300 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary by the Dearborn Education Foundation for ukulele storage. A donation of $4,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for registration for HOSA. A donation of $200 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Goodfellows for the Student Eid Celebration Supplies. Also, a donation of $600 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Access Youth and Education to be used for the Student Eid Celebration Supplies. Another donation of $118 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Amity Foundation to be used for Student Eid Celebration Supplies. And last but certainly not least, a donation of an adapted bicycle has been offered to How School by Amy and Andy Fradkin to be used by students as part of the Adapted Physical Education Program for mobility training, sensory integration, and provide positive behavior support for students. Thank you to all of our generous donors and support of our school, staff, and students.
Thank you, Mr. Adi, and thank you to the donors, the organizations, and the Fradkin family. Next item, please.
Next item is the Approval of Minutes.
Can you read the recommended?
Sure, sorry. Approval of Minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, Policy Committee meeting, April 14, 2025, Board Report 24-132, and the regular P12 meeting, April 14, 2025, Board Report 24-133. I'm looking for a motion to make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support. Motion moved by trustee Deanne Versim, supported by Pete Lyskoff. Any corrections or modifications to the minutes? I do have just a small correction under Board Member Superintendent Commentary section where I commented about the Arab American Heritage Month, and then there is a comment that says just check tape, but that could be deleted and then Arab Americans could be capitalized. Any other corrections? Seeing I have a unanimous approval to this motion?
Yes.
So it is moved. Thank you.